So, welcome, everybody. This is the Maynard zoning Board of Appeals. We're holding this meeting remote. By, what is it, a WebEx meeting? I forget what brand we are. And the time is. Oh, I gotta do that. There we go. Got that. And it's seven oh three and it is Monday, the twenty seventh of February. And first item on our agenda here is to approve the minutes of a meeting we had back in. Where did was it?
It was last month.
January.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, January twenty third. Okay. And I have an issue with it. So I don't know if we want to start to make the motion first, but somebody doesn't know how to spell my name.
Yeah.
Oh. It's in there a couple of times. My computer underlines it in red because my computer is not happy with it.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
See.
Right.
It up right now.
Yeah, yeah, there's a C in it.
I know this.
Yeah, mine was wrong, too.
Mr. Cuthbert.
Yours is wrong. This one?
I think so. Wasn't it this one? I think it was.
The last one was. I know I I.
Well, when did I?
I think it's corrected now.
It might be.
Oh, you you sent it ahead of time. That's what it was.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll have to let our meeting minutes taker now.
So anyways, I would like a motion to approve this meeting or this minute, excuse me.
And make a motion to approve the January twenty third minutes of the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals as amended.
Thank you. Yeah.
I can.
And then I guess we got a vote all in favor. We're all waving at each other, so that's good. So it's now approved. And so I close that meeting item out. The next one is a public hearing for a property of two oh six Main Street, Maynard. It's a variance application filed by Mary O'Ryan at that address. The subject property is a nonconforming, single-family dwelling on a nonconforming lot in in a zoning G R General Residence District. Per metered town bylaw section five dot one dot four, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow encroachment of four point eight feet into the required fifteen-foot side setback to construct a detached garage on the pre-existing concrete slab. So after saying all that, I, Mary, I see you on the computer screen here. Could you speak to your application?
Uh, yes, is now. First of all, it's nice to meet you guys. I'm Mary. Should I share my screen and go through my presentation? Does that work?
That would certainly work with us.
Okay. Hopefully, it's not too long. Um, okay. So this is my property here, two oh six Main Street. I'm sure you've driven by it hundreds of times. Um, but I structured this presentation just based on all of the bullet points in the application. So I think I should touch on everything that's required. Um, but like you said, I'm seeking a variance for the encroachment of four point two feet from the side dimensional requirement of fifteen feet in order to build a single car detached garage on a concrete slab foundation that preexists. Um, but the first section in the application was proposed use, so I can go through that quickly. Uh, the property is two oh six Main Street. Um, seeking relief from the setback in dimensional requirements under section four, the purpose is to build a nonconforming detached garage to store my car on top of the existing nonconforming concrete slab garage foundation. I purchased this property on January fifteenth of twenty one. And as part of preparation to sell, the seller demolished the detached garage as it was beyond repair. The seller left the garage foundation, which is constructed as concrete slab intact. Um, it has not been removed, damaged, altered, built upon, destroyed, anything. Um, and the garage was standing on the property for fifty one years. Um, and my proposal would be to rebuild the garage to the same dimensions of the existing nonconforming concrete slab. Um, so before I move forward, does anyone have any questions with that so far? Okay. Uh, zoning circumstances. So uh, my house was built in the year nineteen hundred and is located in the General Residence District. Um, the property is on the corner of Main Street and Pine Street, and the reason that I mentioned that is because there's two fronts to the property. Um, as a whole, the lot, the single-family dwelling, um, the existing garage concrete slab and the neighborhood generally are existing nonconforming. Um, my lot is just over fifty five hundred square feet, which is significantly less than the dimensional requirement of seven thousand square feet. The um, front on Main Street is four point two feet from the lot line, which is um, quite obviously much closer than the requirement of twenty five feet. And the side of the property is nine feet from Pine Street, which is also considered to be a front, so it's also much closer um than the twenty-five-foot requirement. So the property of two six Main Street and the whole neighborhood that the property is located in is existing nonconforming, as these houses were built in the eighteen ninety hundreds, which were must before the current zoning requirements were established. So the proposed garage would be ten point two feet from the side lot line um, between two oh six Main Street, as the houses on the corner of Main Street and Pine Street and zero Pine Street. Um, so I'm sure that was probably hard to follow by text, so I have some pictures. Um, and I've also submitted a um, plot plan prepared by Stamsky and McNary. Um, so just some photos of the location. This photo is um, a few years old. I believe it was taken in two thousand and fourteen before I purchased the property when I purchased it in twenty one. So right here, this area is my driveway. Um, and this structure is the single-car detached garage that had been on this property for fifty one years. Just before I built the property, this was demolished. So the seller demolished this garage because it was beyond repair. And what exists now is just the garage concrete slab foundation. So my proposal would be to rebuild it to the same dimensions of the concrete slab foundation. But the dimensional requirement that is a problem is this area right here. Hopefully, you can see my cursor. Um, it's ten point two feet from this lot line and the requirement is fifteen feet. So this is where the four point two foot feet variance, you know, would come into play. Um, but as you can see, I wouldn't be encroaching on anyone's living space as my neighbor's garage is right next door. So it would just be rebuilding a garage next to what is already a much larger garage. Um. Here's a more current photo. This is from winter of twenty one. Right here, you can see where the garage has been removed, and this is the concrete slab foundation. Um, this is the ten point two feet, and here is my neighbor's purple garage. Does that make sense so far? Just before I keep moving forward. Okay, thank you. Um, sometimes it's helpful to see kind of an aerial view. So this is my neighbor's purple garage right here on the left-hand corner. This is the concrete slab, and here is my house. Also, over on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see it sort of with the shrubbery. Um, so I showed in the prior photos, my garage would be alongside my neighbor Lois McDonald's garage. Um, and not her living space. My proposed garage would be significantly smaller than my neighbor's current garage and directly across the street from my driveway. So it's, you can't really make it out in this photo, but right here is my driveway. And right here across the street in this area is another garage. And across Main Street is the single-car detached garage of two twenty-five Main Street. Now, the reason I mention all of that is just to sort of illustrate that in the neighborhood, this garage would not stand out. It would blend in as so many of my neighbors also have single-car detached garages, which I illustrated on this map with the little cars. So this right here is the concrete slab foundation of my property. And the little cars represent direct debotters who also have single-car detached garages. Um, proposed build structure, I'm not entirely sure that you need this information, but I thought I'd include it just to be safe. Um, the builder is Rex Olson of Rex Construction. Um, I think you're probably familiar with him as he does a lot of work in the town. But just the general details would be to build a single-story garage on the existing sixteen-by-twenty concrete slab foundation. Um, there's some information in here with sort of his building materials and you know, framing details that we don't need to get into, but it's here if you need it. Um, and hardships. So these are not listed in any particular order, but I have four hardships written down here. Um. When I purchased this property, it was my intention all along to rebuild the garage on top of the concrete slab foundation. And it was explained to me by several real estate agents that that was possible as it was existing nonconforming. So it was not disclosed during my real estate transaction that the permit from the sixties could not be located, which is basically what started this whole process for me, is that the original builder of the garage in the sixties um, put in an application for the permit and it cannot be located. So um, my first hardship is just that it was my intention to rebuild this garage all along when I purchased the property. And it was explained to me as part of that transaction that as it was a nonconforming structure, that that would be possible. Um, number two. So in addition to the fact that the garage foundation is already poured and cannot be removed or moved as it's concrete, my lot is significantly smaller than the current lot requirement. So my lot is just over fifty five hundred square feet. And the current lot requirements, I believe, are seven thousand square feet. So as a result, there's quite honestly no other place on the property for me to put a garage. It's just too small. Um, so the only available and natural place for me to put this garage would be on top of the already existing poured concrete. Um, because there's just no more space. Uh, number three. My house was built in the year nineteen hundreds, so it is very small. It's only nine hundred and eighteen square feet. There's no basement. It's just a crawl space and there is no attic. So just because of those features of the home and the size of the property, there's basically no storage. Um, so I'm having a pretty severe storage issue because there's no basement and no attic. And you know, I'm currently keeping landscaping equipment in my kitchen. So it would significantly alleviate some pretty major storage hardship for me if I could rebuild this garage. Um, and then the last one is privacy. So the garage, as it is now with no garage, I have extremely limited privacy in my backyard. And that is because Pine Street is a pretty significant incline, so it's a hill. And it takes really heavy traffic during the day's day with cars and pedestrians all day long. And that's mostly due to the fact that the bike path is at the end of Pine Street. So nearly all day long, cars and pedestrians going by um, on Pine Street can see the entirety of my backyard. And if there was a structure there, I would have some privacy to enjoy the space. Um, so I've got a picture to try to show that, though. You know, sort of hard to tell not actually physically being in the yard. But right here is Pine Street. You can see it goes up quite a ways and my yard is lower than the road. So this area, if there was a garage structure right here on this concrete, that would create some privacy for my backyard. Um. And detriment potential was the next section of the application. So rebuilding the garage will not cause any detriment to the public good. Um, it would improve the appearance of the neighborhood, in my opinion, and since my purchase of the property, I've done an enormous amount of exterior work that has greatly improved the neighborhood. And rebuilding the garage will not only address my hardships, as outlined in the petition, but will continue in my efforts to invest in and improve the appearance and character of the neighborhood. Um, the neighborhood as a whole, as I mentioned before, is nonconforming to the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws. And if my petition for a zoning variance would be denied, it is my belief that I'd be singled out as a property required to comply. So just to sort of toot my own horn and to express how much I've invested here. Um, this is what my house looked like when I bought it. And I think we can kind of all agree it's pretty ugly. Just no getting around it. It's pretty run down and the landscaping's ugly. And this wall's falling over. And I think all of my neighbors were pretty tired of looking at it. Um, and this is what it looks like now. Which I'm sure you've driven by it. But just sort of trying to show that rebuilding the structure would continue in my efforts to invest in the character of this corner of the town. And then this is what the backyard looked like to everybody going by. My dog's in the photo. Um, so everybody on Main Street had to unfortunately look at this area for I don't know how many years before I bought it. And this is what it looks like now. So I think um. You know, the improvements would continue to be made is what I'm trying to say. Um, neighborhood support. I've received signed statements of support from four neighbors as marked on this map with the stars. There are five stars because Lois owns zero Pine Street and one Pine Street, but the I have four signed letters included here, and these are all direct debotters as listed on the a butters list from the assessor's office. So um, I received sign statements of support from two twenty-nine Main Street here, two oh four Pine Street, zero and one Pine Street, and four Pine Street. And I think zero Pine Street is probably the most significant signed letter of support as her property is directly next to the location of where I would build the garage. Um, and then intent. Wasn't entirely sure what to put for this section, but the intent of the town zoning bylaws is to protect the residents of Maynard and relief sought by the zoning variance application will not cause any detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Maynard. So I just included that bit. That's my presentation.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I don't think, and you guys can correct me, I don't think we have had as thorough a presentation in years, if ever. So.
A plus for presentation and the double A plus for clarity.
Yes. Really, really good. Thank you.
Well, when you start using measurements and front and side and street names, it gets kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Well, as I I I just in my experience, what was good is that you did you recognize that the board is evaluating your criteria and you gave them a a clear statement of how you believe that you need it, and it was very well done.
Thank you. Do you have any questions about what I included or was that enough?
That was gonna be my question of the other guys.
Okay.
So um. Jerry is shaking his head. No. John, Leslie, Brad?
No, no questions.
Wow.
Paige, any questions?
Can I just clarify? Mary is the the fence that you showed, the nice new-looking fence, was that along Main Street? Yeah. In properly main street. Okay, and the driveway, the only curb cut is um off of Pine Street.
Pine Street.
So what do you guys want to do?
Um, vote.
You gotta vote on something first.
Well, first we have to decide if we're going to continue the public meeting part or close it, right? I mean, the uh, public comment.
Yeah.
Well.
On on her application package, she had included those notes from her neighbors saying that they're not opposed or in favor, however it was phrased. So we've got, we've got that document.
Did you want me to read those into the record or are you okay with them being attached?
They're attached.
Okay.
If you if you want it, go ahead and read them. You can, but.
I I I'm also, as long as you guys feel that's okay with the point of order, and I'm fine with keeping those attached.
Yeah.
And so a- as as Mary iterated about what we have to find, I think she did a very good job of telling us what we need to find. So do we have a volunteer to itemize or comment on those items? So that we can get that in the record on our thoughts rather than just on her thoughts.
You mean like the soil shape, topography?
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Oh, so do you want to hear the motion as well?
I think the motion can be the easy part. The hard part, because that, for the motion, you're gonna say, as as we just discussed. But the 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 iteration of what it is we're finding, I think we need to put that into the record. Interpreting what Mary said.
You just, you just need to close the public hearing first.
Right, yeah.
Set the public hearing or not.
All right.
Public comment, public hearing, whatever.
Public comment, yeah.
Okay, make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Great. So I get a second? We got a second? We're all in favor, right? Yep, enough of us are in favor. And then uh, good. So now now we get to paraphrase what it is we want to say.
So could I make a motion to approve the request per variance to allow the encroachment of four point eight feet into the required fifteen-foot side setback to construct a detached garage on the existing concrete slab at two oh six Main Street. Um, finding that owing to the uh, circumstance of the smallness of the lot, that there not be any other um reasonable place to place it. Uh, that the literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship. Um. In that she has no place to store things that one would normally not store within a house. Um, that the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. And that's all I wrote. I don't know if that's enough.
I have I have a question about that. Um, I believe the application said it was to um to put um, the dimension of the existing concrete slab. The concrete slab is fifty-one years old and it may not be up to uh, building codes to hold a new structure. So I believe the application says it's going to be in that dimension. Where and and exact and and location. So I don't know if that makes a difference because it sounded to me like wording was that um, have to keep the existing lab.
Yeah, I think as as she put in that comment from Rex Construction, he was gonna put a concrete block footing on top of the slab and then build the the two-by-fours on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
So he's accepting that that is going to be a reasonable foundation. Because I don't know what's below grade, right? I don't know how big the frost.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And and so he's just gonna run with that. And so however it was phrased, I believe her application package is pretty clear.
And just to that point, the building inspector um, had no comments because he actually had kind of gone through this and was go go uh, on his way to grant the um the building permit, you know, had no problems with any of the plans that were submitted, but then we realized about the the zoning aspect. So um uh, the all those plans were submitted and and the whole, the permit is in a holding pattern right now.
All right. The the only thing I would add to Leslie's uh, thoughts are in in my mind, looking at the the pictures, you know, ones going down driveway before and after is it's almost a de minimis event. You know, it's it's four feet. Yeah, but ninety percent of the slab seems to be already within the allowed area. And so it's just that it's a triangle. It's not even the full length of that structure of the concrete. It's just the triangle point of it that's sticking out.
Yeah, it's oddly at an angle.
Yeah, so I I would say it's it's almost a de minimis. And um the pre-existing structure that had been there. If she had bought the house with the crappy structure and then she tore it down, she wouldn't be here. Because it would have just been a continuation of of a renovation project of a pre-existing structure. It just happened there's a change of ownership in the middle of it. So I I think I mean, that that's just what I wanted to toss into it as well. I don't know if you want to get that in the record for when we write up the decision. But um, that's that's my thought. So you made the motion, Leslie, is that right?
I believe it was complete enough. I don't.
Did we get a second on it?
Second.
Yep.
Good. And if you want to toss my thoughts into that, then we can vote on the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
So all in favor. I think we're all in favor. And now when we write the record, who is the alternate and who's the voting member? Because we just need to have five votes, is it? Or is it all six?
No, it is. In this, we need four, the four affirms.
Four. Well, we got six affirms.
Right, so I'm I'm the alternate. So my vote doesn't necessarily count.
All right.
It counts in the.
Well, I'm sure that the record shows that you agree, though.
Yeah, because we have five voting members per per event, right? And so we had six here tonight, which is also a rare thing to get everybody here at once. It's really exciting.
They're snowed in.
Yeah. So what I like to do at this point, Mary, is to put the spotlight on either Bill or Julia to say what happens next.
I'll leave it to Julia tonight.
Okay, so um, you're, so congratulations. You got your decision.
Thank you.
Um, so what what's gonna happen next is we'll work this week to write your decision and um, then the board will uh, approve that decision as written. And then the next step will be to get that uh, to the town clerk where it will sit for twenty days um, for a uh appeal period. As as we see all your neighbors uh, supported you, so I don't see you you getting any appeals, but just in case that that sits there. After that appeal period is done, you'll get a um, a certificate of no appeal and you'll have to come and grab your a decision from the clerk's office. And then bring it to the Registry of Deeds and get it uh, certified at the Registry of Deeds. Once you present that confirmation that it's been registered, um, that's when Rick will be able to give you your permit. So you can either email that to us um, or just upload that directly, give it to Rex to upload directly to your um, building permit um, application, and then he'll be able to sign off.
Okay, great. So I could email it to you and Bill and then um is it twenty calendar days or business dates? Calendar. Okay. Yep, okay. Well, thank you, everybody.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So do we have anything else on the agenda?
Um, the the uh, only thing I had is a little bit of uh, not a little bit, a lot of bit of bad news in terms of personnel is that Megan will be leaving us as Assistant Town Administrator. Um, this is.
On Friday.
On Friday. She she's going to Concord as the Assistant Town Manager. Uh, it's good for Megan, uh, and we are very fond of her, as you all know. Uh, it's um will recover, but we're we're sorry to see her go, but we're happy for her.
So. Is there the matter of correspondence?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Apologies. Uh, we do have some correspondence. Um. Leslie, do you want to discuss with a little bit of this?
Uh, yes, but do we do it with Mary here or not?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
No, she's a member. No, this is this is.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Mary.
So.
Mary, we're gonna draft for a board here before I'm done.
All right. Do you mind me to just go for the whole on to lotta bill?
But while I understand this might be something you want to discuss in the public hearing forum as opposed to a private conversation that's not with a quorum of members here, but we got everybody here. So if you want to talk to everybody, it's now a public meeting, which we we put it, it just, it was not, whatever you want to talk about, it was not published in an agenda.
Right, because.
So I don't know what that means.
Well, the the thing is, Paul, it's not an item yet. It's a discussion. Uh, it's not even up for public comment, so you could, you could, you don't have to take any public comment on it. Um, this is just a discussion for the board. Um, so it it's something that I I agree with you that we have everybody here. Let's 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 do it and see if there's a consensus of you know, what you would like to do or what you'd like me to do or um, you know, whatever.
All right, so with no further ado, let's break the suspense and give the floor to Leslie.
Okay, so hmm, I forget the exact date, maybe February ninth, February fifteenth-ish um, at Littleton's Town Meeting, they uh, passed um a bill to uh, regulate gun shops in town. And as you may know, there were, there was a building in downtown Littleton that housed at least eighty gun shops, and that building was sold. And we can presume that those eighty gun shops are going to be looking for another town to move into because. Town to move into because um their gun laws, I mean their um bill. Makes it hard for. For them to find space in because they can't be within so many feet of a school, a park. A church, um a daycare center, et cetera, et cetera. And I think they can't be within so many feet of each other. So um we can presume that they will be looking for another town to settle in and. Um, it's my understanding that we have nothing on our books to regulate gun shops. So if they all decided that they wanted to come here, we don't have much. To prevent Maynard from being the home of eighty gun shops. So I'm.
So I just just a quick question. You're talking about eight zero?
Yes, yes.
It's like a lot of businesses. I, how big is this gun shop thing?
Well, they're they're probably just individuals who have uh permits to sell guns, but they were all. Clustered in this one. One shop. In this one building. So um Acton is alre- it's my understanding um that Acton is already crafting something. And so I would, I guess it's too late to put together anything for Springtown meeting, but I really think that if we don't get on it. We're gonna be next. So um I'm proposing that the planning board. I mean, that the zoning Board of Appeals hopefully would um. Take Acton's bylaw and just um adapt it to Maynard and get it on the fall. Uh, town, you know, the foul, the the. The warrant for the fall town meeting.
I think it's a planning board um operation. It's nothing to do with the zoning board.
Yeah, uh it let me procedurally, let me just explain. Um, the zoning board as a chartered board. Can bring an item to. Uh, town meeting like for for. Um, placement on the warrant. And in this case. Um, depending on whatever the board wanted, uh there's like in in this case, if there was. A question of um who would sponsor it, there's a number of ways to get something on the warrant. Uh, but all of them have to go through the public hearing process with the planning board. And and so that's what Brad's saying is correct. So if the planning board sponsored it, if the Conservation Commission sponsored it, whatever. It would all go through the planning board and they would take it through the hearing process. But for initiation, which is really like, okay, we have this. You know, like we did with the uh home home based businesses, we, I think, didn't we initiate it? I think, and we brought it to the planning board, but. Um, it can, it it can be done and it doesn't need the uh number of signatures or things like that to get. Uh, placed on the warrant. The planning board's role in this is first to decide if it's. Statutorily legal or appropriate, but um then. They'll hold the public hearings. What the planning board does uh when it's time uh to vote, they don't vote to approve. The the item that has to go in town meeting. What they vote to approve is whether they're gonna recommend the item or not. So in this case, uh like Leslie had mentioned. Um, Acton and Littleton and stuff, she's correct, uh that that in Littleton, there was a a. Consolidation of uh some sort of um. Number of dealers for doing different, I I I'm not sure the specifics of it, but they're they were in. The firearms business, we have been contacted um by several businesses. Right now, um there are straight retail. So they could go anywhere a retailer. Can be located by right. The Littleton and the Acton in general restricts them to business districts by special permit. So it would be done the same way we do like for. I don't know, a a bar or we do for um. Certain types of uses. You know, it may be something like a um fast food requires a special permit. But um so there's been no legislation developed to date, to be clear. Um, but I would imagine. If it mirrored uh what's on the books, a Littleton has been approved, a um Acton is in the process, I believe. Uh, would be basically requiring a special permit in business areas.
So just just let me play devil's advocate for a minute. Uh, Dick's Sporting Goods and Cabela's both sell guns. Right? We got it. We got a Cabela's in Hudson and Dix's out west along two ninety somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
So and there's there's a few others around like that. Would this? Bylaw affect them?
Well, there is no bylaw, so it would depend how we.
If we develop something, would it? Conceivably affect the big box store people?
Why would it?
If, well, wherever they are, they're in some kind of a retail area. And if Maynard like down at that next to the market basket, somebody puts a big box store in there for sporting goods. Would this potential bylaw? Give those folks a problem? You know, to be able to sell guns there.
Well, it would require, like in the case of Maynard Crossing, like we have uh the, I think um. Let's see, do we have anybody with, well, I I can't think of anybody that saw guns in there at the moment, but let's assume we did. Um. That zoning is or has its own zoning in the N B O D. The Neighborhood Overlay Business District. So that probably would. Default to whatever is amended. And if if it was amended to. Be applicable in the N B O D, yeah, it might. I guess it's it's very difficult to say because we haven't done it. There's nothing been that has been done. But mirroring, like, let's just say we mirrored what. Acton had done. Um, if somebody was to, you would first, I guess. Develop definitions for a firearms retailer, a firearms assembler, which is what we've been getting is assembly. People do assembly and stuff. And I don't know, there's probably three or four, you'd think with five years in the military, I could come up with better examples, but I don't have them. Um. But there's different.
Gun repair.
Repair shop, a gunsmith, like a gunsmith. Yeah, I mean, you could come up with the categories, which I would recommend for whoever ends up doing this. I would say you want to, you know, recommend them. Uh, it these categories, okay, but then the use is like, um. Were they appropriate? Were they inappropriate? So uh, yeah, the state may override in certain situations like distances from daycare and things like that.
So the other thing I see is is an interesting challenge if this goes forward in discussion. Is the bylaw that Brad and the planning board have been working on. Because if these guys uh basically are talking a small machine shop with somebody doing repair of a of a firearm. In their basement. And if nobody knows what they're doing, it doesn't matter according to the bylaw that we've developed. And so. Are we talking now of perhaps writing a rule or a bylaw that says we want to know if you're playing with guns in your basement?
Well, if they're selling them legally, ATF needs to be aware. And so they would be. And that's how we found out um about some of them is ATF has been contacting us. Um, asking about, you know, do you do you guys allow this? Is this? What what's going on? So as long as it's done legally, we know the illegal is.
I'm sure there are people in town that are carrying weapons in their house for themselves and for their friends. And and I'm sure there's an underground, you know, uh industry there. I don't know how large it is. Um, but I do know people from Littleton that do that. And they do that in their house. So.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
But if they want to sell them legally, ATF.
To be able to sell them on a resale, but I think what Paul is referring to is, you know, is a like a gunsmith trade shop.
Yeah.
Now, and I and and if they're quiet, that would fall into the proposed type A. You know, business where, you know, nobody would would care.
Well, if you if you prohibited it. Um, so.
Specifically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I I this is a tough one and and guns are one of those issues that are always tough.
Yeah, I mean.
A couple in other areas and depending, you know. I think what Littleton did and what um Acton did makes sense. On the whole, um would we, you know, what would we want to make sure we know where is going? Would we want to know where this is going? You know, we do it like like I said, with a brewery, a home brew, not a home brewery, a um, what do you call it? Craft brewery. Yeah, I I I, you know.
But even even uh like reloading ammunition. You know, uh gun enthusiasts always make their own bullets, you know, for instance, you know, they. A lot of time doing that kind of stuff. So and and I'm sure that it's going on. You know, in town and it goes on in every town, probably around here. So I don't know how how it can be necessarily, if you're trying to regulate that. Um, but yeah, there's, you know. That's gonna be hard. It's that's a that's gonna be a difficult problem. It's gonna be more difficult.
Yeah, especially with the numbers that Leslie's talking about. If there's eighty.
There was eight years, yeah.
That that's like eighty house basements of people tinkering.
Well, so to to be clear, the the eighty were mostly dealers. Um, so they were using that location um for the sole purpose of of like dealing or or selling um. The the weapons. Um, so what? And and that's a very, yeah, it was a very interesting a anomaly um. Of, you know, someone found kind of found a loophole and was like, if we all go to this one location, then we can all be in the same place. Um, and there were also many who had, there were eighty um. Like businesses, but some of them are owned by multiple of the same people. So they opened up like multiple LLCs or or that type of of thing. Um, the the one, like, for example, one of the inquiries we got was was for um gunsmith. And so that's been really interesting to kind of go down that road of. Learning about the difference between a gunsmith and a gun manufacturer and repair um versus assembly and. Um, ATF defines all of those very clearly. Um, and at this point. Um, you know, the the increase that we have gotten are are more on the gunsmith side um and for locations such as the mill.
I knew it.
Guns and flutes. There you go.
So we're not, I I just wanted to say like, we're not seeing it in in like, we haven't been contacted by eighty gun dealers trying to. But in the last, I think, you know, in the last year and. A half or two years, however long I've worked here, um. You know, every every couple of months, we we get um contacted by someone and kind of explain um the the rules to them. Or lack thereof.
The lack thereof that I worry about.
Well, in in the case of um. Why are they leaving Littleton? Is I I not a hundred percent sure and I don't want to speculate. Where it, you know, something that I'm really not sure of, but Littleton. Littleton's revamping of their bylaws. Triggered, no pun intended, um this exodus.
Well, the building got sold and then they. And so the building's going to be repurposed and then I guess. The town. Well, I don't know.
The new bylaw, there are new bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, but but essentially that. What I think what we told you is all we know about it. Um, but I I I think if this board wanted to sponsor it or to, you know, they have the. Opportunity to do it for sure. If they didn't want to and they felt it was the the role of the planning board, there are methods. To uh request that they sponsor it by individuals. And if if there was a citizen's petition, we have one or two citizens petitions pretty much every um. Warrant, that's how the uh what got passed last time, Julia, the the plastic. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, things like that. So it. That that's all. The 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 one thing I can't do is uh. We're, you know. Our timeline for this fall, I mean, for this springtime meeting is is just about impossible. But we're having a fall town meeting because of the um the school stuff. So we'll be having that. So that's that's what I'm looking at timeline wise. And I'll leave it up to the board to. You know. Decide what what's good or the individuals will help whoever I need to help.
The other item um that I'm gonna bring up later uh and not not to bombard you with something to think about that I hope to review for Fall Town Meeting. Is um our our zoning map um and some of the inconsistencies um that I found as I'm. Kind of taking a deeper dive into the layers.
Yeah.
Um, so um I'll probably bring that up and um put that on an agenda and go through it at at a at a different time um in detail with you, but. Something, another thing that I'm gonna uh. Hopefully ask for for your um your support of that. That uh.
That sounds like a a great project, Julia. Because frankly, on the end of the street here, if I can talk off the record, there is that one. Uh, I think business zoned area that is just sort of. Rubbing it in our faces. You know, with all those trucks and everything else there. And if that was zoned not business, then we'd have a stronger argument to get them to move out. But that's that's maybe something you can outline in your zoning rewrite.
Exactly. And also just like, you know, following parcel lines. Um. Not zoning streets, um not zoning water bodies. Um, usually you cut those out. So it's some of the things are just like, you know, drying and and basic kind of. Um, now that we have the computer software in house, um we can kind of go through it a little more in depth than I think we could beforehand. Um, and yeah, and other ones where, you know, in nineteen fifty six, they they wrote a zoning bylaw for for what they wanted to see and not what existed. Um, and we're still seeing the effects of that. And then that's totally, but surely we had all these little ones kind of pop up and and change. So. Um, I'll I'll try to present it to you in those kind of. Three different manners of like mapping kind of lines issues, but. In in any regard, it's hard to tell, like, was this a mistake that someone made when like drawing it on the computer or was that a a of a? An actual.
So, yeah. Yeah, so as you go forward with that. There will, I can imagine there will be changes to what we have as our current map. Will each one of those adjustments of a border need to be described and reasoned? And then all of that as a package would go to a town meeting?
Correct. Yep. So e- each each um we would do it by uh coordinates. And so each of those changes on the line would then be, you know, a change from this coordinate to this coordinate on this parcel. Um, and then it would be in a very long list uh with an attached map, then that would all go into one article. It wouldn't be separate articles.
So, yeah, I I look forward to that because I have yet to understand why we have the zoning map the way we do now. And that would be very useful.
Yeah.
So I think for both discussions, we should, you know, definitely start those. Those processes, you know, within the next um two months, so we can get them all rolling for our fall town meeting schedule.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, Paul, you know, the the thing is, it's really interesting. You just got me thinking about. Um. You know, the the planning board. Has their role and they ultimately approve zoning articles. But with zoning specifics, the zoning board is. Probably the best entity. To talk about the ramifications of zoning. I mean, and like I said, I'm I'm dreading some of the other neighborhoods along Powder Mill, wh- wh- ultimately will be. Will come up with something and they're just inappropriately zoned because of. The lots in a certain block being inappropriate for the zoning that was laid on top of them. And, you know, and then we. And, you know, and then we end up with this sort of thing, like Mary's tonight was a perfect example. You know, it. There are consequences to. To zoning designations that. That is, makes it very difficult to do it en masse. And, you know, wh- when you're laying it on top of uh, existing um, property divisions, a subdivision and, and whatnot. It's, it's a difficult thing. It's, I mean, most of it's pretty good, but, you know, we do have issues like this. And when we get, I, I'm just dreading some of these neighborhoods that we're gonna hit when we, um. You know, when we start looking at areas that need an overlay or if, God forbid. Can you imagine if everybody off of Powder Mill, Julia, in between uh, some of the areas who've looked at off of uh. Off of uh, Waltham and Powder Mill, if everybody wanted to put a patio on. Like, the, we, we'd be in the ZBA for next, we'd be having emergency meetings.
So Bill, the area you're talking about, when you say Powder Mill, are you talking those, those streets on the side away from the river? Are you talking about?
Yeah, and these are neighborhoods that are viable neighborhoods. People like it, they love it. And if everybody, they're just not appropriate for zoning that was designated for them, in my opinion.
Okay, so you're talking a major rewrite of the definitions then. The general residents or something like what Mary has there, um, the, the lot size and the setbacks probably would be redefined.
Probably.
And, and that all doesn't need to be done at the same time. So, you know, just looking at like minor line adjustments could maybe be this fall town meeting. And then spring town meeting, we do some of the other adjustments or vice versa, and you can break it up. So, you know, we're not trying to do too much. Um, and then the other thing that we could do is also on both issues, um, we can hold joint meetings with planning. So, you know, where, where there's a lot of overlap in jurisdiction, um, and you would maybe like to hear the opinion of, of the other board that's involved. Um, with the ramifications, you know, we can, we can do that all at the same time. So, you know, we don't have to keep bouncing back and forth of like, planning boards of this and zoning boards of this.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good point. And overlay zoning also gives another, you know.
I hate it. I hate overlays.
Well, I would too, Paul, but, but when you're looking at, that's something you and I should talk about uh, uh, with the Powder Mill. The kind of situation that we're in with, the, it, there's different reasons to have an overlay. Um, and like in the downtown overlay district, which we have now, uh, it's worked out well, uh, in the, on the whole. Um, some downtown overlay districts are mandatory where everybody, you, this is what you have to do. And there's been a discussion about that. Ours happens to be optional. Um, I've been in other areas where, you know, it, it works both ways, but if people are. Like, let's say, for example, we had a district where people were apprehensive of, we, zoning board knew that this. So, the zoning that was there, applicable to it, was more or less inappropriate. And we based that on the number of applicants we had with similar, you know, petitions. On the other hand, often homeowners in particular are very, very reluctant. To say, if I come in and I say, hey, Bill, I'm, I'm your planning director and I think. We should rezone your land for this. A lot of people are like, what the heck? You know, I, I, I don't, I'm distrustful of it. Not necessarily of, of, you know, the individual, but. You know, the, whatever the case may be, the authority. The, often a way around that to give people a sense of security, but work towards the same goals. Be it, be it denser development, be it affordable housing, be it multi, whatever you wanted.
Yeah.
Or, you know, is to have an optional overlay. And that's kind of the benefit of it. It takes a fear away. So you don't have to do it. But if you want to do it, here's what you can get. Why would somebody do that? Well, you make an incentive that makes it worth their while. So in the case of like the downtown overlay district where we say, you know, if you develop under that district. You don't have to have, um, you don't have to worry about setbacks, for example. You know, you can go up. Or whatever the case may be. That's the advantage with the overlay. It takes kind of a fear factor away, in my experience.
Long as it doesn't get out of control.
And, you know, yeah, that's very important. You don't want anything out of control.
So, as, as I'm looking at the, at the, the meeting here, this, this is really good because we don't normally have time to just explore the future. And I appreciate Leslie, you're, you're bringing up that topic. My question is, what do we do with it? Who does what and when and how?
Uh, I have no idea.
Do we ask?
I'd look to Bill for guidance.
There are three ways this board could go. They could decide, we want to initiate an article. Or we don't. They could decide that this is something that is more appropriate for some, another board to take up, like the planning board. And then uh, Leslie or whoever wants to be a champion for it can go to the, you know. That's typically how a resident would do it. They go to the, you know, the planning board and they'd say. Um, they could say, you know, hey, I would like to do this. We, you know, are you interested? And you can informally, you know, present to the board. Um, and then the third way is it is, as a citizen's petition. Where you get, I, I don't know the number. I think it's forty or thirty or something. But, but, you know, uh, uh, people that want to present it as a citizen's petition.
If you go, if you go that route, Bill, as a citizen's position, and it, and it makes it up and gets on the, the warrant for town meeting.
Yeah.
Is that petition what gets put into bylaw or does that simply say, somebody has to write it up and we'll vote on it in the next town meeting? How does that work?
That's a great que- that's a great question. Um. With, if it's going in the general bylaws, the general bylaws, the planning board doesn't have anything to do with it. So if, if something like the bag band never went through the, the planning board, because it's a general bylaw. If it's a zoning bylaw, it'll go through planning board hearings. So, and I would imagine, you know, that anything connected with this would be a zoning bylaw. So, there would be an initial draft presented, kind of like we just, you know, we just did. Uh, we, we took a, um, a bite out of our, um, home-based businesses bylaw that we're doing.
Yeah.
And Rick, I, I don't know if I told you guys, this is so many forgotten. That, uh, but Rick wanted a definition for trade shop.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, okay, all right. So.
The others might not know of it, but I, I.
Yeah, i- in a nutshell, uh, zoning board. In a nutshell, um, as in part of our rewrites going through the home-based businesses, we were going to eliminate trade shop. Um, and because the trade shop. It became entangled in a lot of the home-based businesses. We thought, well, let's just get rid of it as a home-based business. What we failed to notice, and this is on me, um, was that. If we eliminated the category altogether. Rick, our building commissioner, has a number of uses that fall under that category that might be impeded. So for example, in a business district, you may have a plumbing shop. And we just kind of thought, all right, that would be a normal business shop. But it would fall under trade. So we wanted to make sure the trade shop, even if we're eliminating it for residential uses, was still. In the appropriate categories, business, central business and industrial. On the other hand, we didn't like the definition that we had, which was tin smith, you know, um. Whatever, you know, bogey whipmaker, whatever these things were. We wanted to um, simplify it for Rick. So the, there's a, a second article that was initiated by the planning board to. Basically redefine what a trade shop is. And a trade shop, if you could see it, it's on the planning board. Hearing the first month in, or the first uh, meeting of uh, March, but it's basically. It's like a person associated with a profession that, you know, and it's very flexible.
I, I think just on, on some of your points, the questions that you asked Paul. So, you know, if, if you wanted to, if you guys decided you wanted to pursue this. Um, you know, I would strongly recommend that you put that on, on the agenda for the next hearing. So you guys can have a discussion on this topic and, you know, follow public meeting law. Um, and then, you know, either keep that as like a, just a discussion topic. Um, and then if you want, if you decide to pursue it, then you would move to, um, you know, having a drafting. Um, your article and then you would kind of follow the public hearing process of having to advertise and, and then. Uh, gain public comment and, and go through all of those items, um, just like planning board, if, if they were the ones to support that. Um, but the citizen's petition, um, the, the public comment is a tough one. Because, uh, I mean, a lot of the citizens' petitions come out of public comments in the select board. Um, so a lot of times this select board will have a topic and, and sometimes they'll sign it. You know, we, we would like this. Uh, board or, or committee to, to take on the sponsorship of this or, or ask the citizens' petition. Or the citizens who are petitioning to work with said board. Um, so i- it really depends on whether or not you kind of, you guys would like to trigger that conversation. Or, um, if, if you would like to wait for it to kind of go up to select board and see which way they want to go or there's, there's a lot of different items. But I think having this, continuing this discussion on a, on a public meeting agenda would be really important.
We have time, I mean, now, you know.
Uh, is it, is it possible that maybe we should have a further discussion just among our board? Uh, as like maybe some sort of a, a working group to gather more information as to what's going on or what was going on in Littleton and, and maybe. Try to get an understanding of what was going on, what the potential impacts are here. Um, and, and maybe try to understand who the customers are or what, what they do. You know, sort of uh, uh, informally. So we have a, a better idea, a better understanding of the background of.
I can forward everything I have to this board tomorrow. I'll be happy. I mean, if you will.
But I think, yeah, so calling it a discussion versus like, you know, you're not making any decisions. You just want to gather more information as a quorum. Um, then, you know, we need to make sure that that is publicly available. Um, your other option, of course, is, you know, for special, special circumstances. Um, you could go into, into executive session if you didn't want those, those conversations to be public. Um, but uh, I'll defer to Bill on, on executive session rules.
Yeah, I don't think that would be, in, in this case, at this point, I think it would be uh, something that, that would be, you know, you, would be needed.
So, let, let me ask another dumb question. That suppose we get this on this, the, the fall meeting agenda for the town meeting.
Yeah.
And then sometime before that. Before we even get something written up to get in to get to the, the vault, the fall vote. We have a bunch of neighbors move in with their shops, their gun shops.
Yeah.
And we put this thing and, and they, because they're home-based businesses or whatever, and they just buy a shop in town and they start. Doing whatever they're doing with the guns. And then the town meeting votes and says, we don't like you anymore. Are they grandfathered?
They are considered existing non-conforming.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and, and also the other thing is regardless what is done, if it's going in the zoning bylaws. In the end, it goes through, the public hearings go through the planning board. So, you know, regardless, i- if it's going in the general bylaws, which is probably wouldn't, it wouldn't go through the, the planning board. Um, but uh, to answer uh, Brad's question, I mean, honestly. It may have been a little slower, but I, and I, I'm prejudiced at this point, but I think that the. Working between the two boards for our home-based businesses has, we've got a pretty good. Zoning bylaw coming up for discussion. And, um, you know, having the working groups like that, if it's something the board's desire, I think is, is, is very good. I mean, we've had, it's been two years almost since we've done the, the home-based businesses. And we've gotten that. I'm not worried about town meeting. I'm really not.
I think that, you know, when it comes to certain discussions though, like if, if everyone decides that they want to be on a working group. Um, then, then that doesn't work. So that would kind of be up to Paul, you know, for you to decide how, how. Like if you would want that conversation to kind of happen behind the scenes and then work up like home-based businesses did, you know, with just one or two members. Um, involved in the conversation and then that, that be brought to the bigger, you know, group or if you'd like that.
If we follow the model that Brad and Bill Crenshaw did from planning board. One of each, a lot of discussion, and then it moved forward and you get them, the planning people running the hearings. It worked. And so what I'm thinking here is Leslie seems to be a champion of this, bringing it up. She's got her ear to the ground. I'd like to volunteer her to be the zoning person interacting with somebody on the planning board. And so Leslie, am I, am I volunteering you too quickly?
I guess not.
I, I, I would like to say something about, about that. Um, I really, I really did feel that because it was just. One member from the zoning board and one member from the planning board on that, that it, and, 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 and Bill Lesmer. Um, Nemsor, um, I really felt that we were sort of limited into our input that we had. So it was basically initially crafted around our own opinions as to what should be done. So that's why I'm saying that I think that if you've got more people involved initially. Uh, to, to understand, you know, what, where everybody's at, especially, you know, a hot button topic like, you know, guns. You know, and gunsmithing and things like that, that it might, it might be prudent to do something a little bit ahead of time. Before you go into an official, you know, working group with the planning board.
That's a good point. Fair point.
Yeah, the, the challenge that I see there, and I didn't realize this was developing the way you described Brad until it was already in place. Is the open meeting law. If we get a bunch of people involved, we have to um, advertise it and have it as an open discussion. Whereas the working group concept, it's, it's like you're developing the thing that you're getting ready for the open meeting. So I don't know the rules and all the details. I just get skittish when I hear that, you know, we got to follow the rules.
Well, I, I think of one important thing, one important thing here is to understand the difference between. Public hearing and a public meeting. So, um, for example, we had a public meeting. Uh, we had one or two, maybe three with the home-based businesses bylaw. Between, with the zoning board and the uh, planning board. Um, and, and basically the meeting is to just may, have the discussion in. Public session, but you're not making any decisions. So for example, and, and I see where, I understand what Brad's saying and, and it's a good point. If you had, for, and I'm just throwing this out, for argument's sake, let's say after town meeting, one of the things we wanted to do after this town meeting. Was to have a joint meeting of the planning board and the zoning board for the public to comment. On what do we want to do, if anything, with uh, firearms and the zoning bylaws. And it's not a question of it has to be a hearing. It's a question of it has to be a noticed public meeting. Now, if decisions are going to be made, made that, which they're not going to be initially. Uh, then it's a hearing. So it's a relatively simple purpose, uh, you know, uh. This, we say, okay, we're going to talk about it, want to decide what we want to do. That's just a post of meeting. Uh, and we want to, we want to create a working group after we've had the initial discussion. We want to create a working group that is going to go off and come up with a draft to come back. And then you may enter the hearing process. So i- it's not that cumbersome. It's a question of, um, you know, i- it doesn't make it easier for the working group. To know what their boards want. Now, we had a, like I said, it's been slow, but on the other hand, what we got now. I mean.
I, I think, sorry to interrupt, Bill. I just want to say, I think just that the point. I I think, sorry to interrupt, though. I just wanna say, I think just that the point that you're trying to make is that it's 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 important to make sure that this topic gets on an agenda before we start like a working group and get them all rolling and and then, you know, kind of it pops up out of nowhere type idea. Um, and then that can be concerning for a public to be like, wait, where did this come from? Where you know, what what, where did this discussion even, you know, kind of come from? So I think having the similar going over all the same types of things and maybe, uh, Bill and I being a little bit more informed on on being able to present some more information um, to you all, um, in a discussion, then we, then you'd be able to decide, Paul, at the end of that, you know, announced public agendas, discussion, whether or not you wanna have, you know, elected member to a working group or, um, proceed.
So, as as I was sitting here thinking and hearing you guys describe these and saying fall versus spring, I just came up with a different kind of an idea. In our current, um, home-based business draft bylaw, because it's not official yet, right? We haven't voted on it. Suppose we put a clause at the bottom that any home-based business must abide by all local, state and federal rules, laws. And would that put a damper on any of these guys doing firearms?
Well, I think we have that in there.
Do we? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Yeah, we do. And 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 like Julia had mentioned earlier, that you can't just, under federal law. I I I I'm not sure all the 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 federal laws, but but there are laws where we are notified by ATF about this activity or is it okay here? Um, and nobody would be exempt from that as it is now.
I I don't think you're gonna run into a situation where someone, you know, it's it's like, ah, this can be my home-based business. Um, and I can go around the federal government, but you know, eh, maybe that's just ensuring that there's some um, some clarity on on federal law. You would hope that they would have have that clarity, eh, if they're doing an act activity such as this, but we can, um, yeah, may, we can keep clarifying, you know, reiterating, I guess is the right word.
So, uh, let's, let's move this forward a a little bit here. That we've got this suggestion from Leslie that we oughta look into this. And you guys have been coming, you you town people, if I can call you.
Town folk, town folk.
Folk, yeah, of of different routes to go. So the first thing in my mind is to come up with the the uh, the outline of what it, what the rules are in moving forward. The, to do it with a, with a, uh, resident petition kind of thing seems to me a a little longer cause you're putting an extra step in it. If we can do it through one of the protocols that zoning board goes and talks with planning board and we do the publishing and we do the public hearing, no, public meeting or the, whatever it is, that public thing. And and then we go forward. What's the timeline of doing that? And just so that we know what we're doing and and, you know, is it two months out? Is it four months out before we have to do something? Cause you gotta publish your, your meeting agendas and so on. But with this home-based business thing, I just, I think I started it by just whispering to Bill, I wish we could do something about this. And then then Brad volunteered and we got planning board and it was off to the races, even though it was a little slow.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that was like almost two years now, we're into this.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, we need to do something that's faster for this, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Paul, maybe, maybe the best thing to do at this point, we've got the basics and nothing, there's no way we're gonna have a hearing next month. We have a meeting on it. Perhaps you had a a brief conversation with Chris at the planning board? Would that be?
Chris is already aware of that this is
Yeah.
Something we wanna deal with.
So who's gonna have that conversation? If Leslie, Leslie, have you already done it or you want me to do it?
I I have reached out to him, but his comment was, oh, I didn't know what was going on in the neighboring towns. This is interesting.
Yeah.
So.
What I would suggest, Paul, to give, I can forward you all I have. It's not a lot. Um, I have experience with this in other areas that eh, tells me that we wanna eh, we wanna make sure we know what we, what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve, uh, with anything. Um, why don't I circulate what we have from the neighboring towns? Perhaps I can, um, set up an online conversation between you and Chris and see if there's anything that might work together easier. And if not, we can go on a different route. Maybe that'd be a good starting point.
Yeah, cause, you know, you you know the rules and the protocols of how to do things. I I'm just, you know, I I just try to run these meetings as easily and nicely as we can, but I can imagine some challenges ahead with this one.
Sure.
And I I don't know, Leslie, may maybe you're the, the, take the lead the way Brad did on the last one. Maybe it's Brad again, if he loves this interactive stuff. I don't, I don't mind one way or another.
I I do think that Brad, you know, you have a good point that there was a lot of back and forth. And so, you know, that that took a lot of time, you know, you guys were investing a lot of time and effort into, um, into a draft. Um, and then every time it kind of came up, what reached the the level of a board, you went back to the drawing board and then you build yourself up and you think you're almost done and you backed it back all the way down. Um, and so I think if if we can have, you know, learn from that experience and have more of the public meeting discussions, uh, maybe more if you go the working group route, um, you know, obviously talking with with Chris and and the planning board, but, um, ensuring that there's maybe some some more check-ins and and kind of we make steps of like, well, do this, then this, then this, and and making sure that those conversations are happening, so that way the working group doesn't do too much work and then get completely, you know, pushed back down to the drawing board.
And the other thing is honestly, yeah, Julie is right with that. I think the other thing is, we don't, this board hasn't discussed this. Maybe maybe everybody does not even wanna get involved in this. So I I'll, you know, that's something you guys would probably benefit, uh, from a little time. And if I provide you the information we have and maybe, maybe, you know, out of our sixth board here, you know, some don't wanna do it in this board and we you know, we move on to another or whatever.
And really to have any of you share your opinion that should be on an agenda that's posted, you know, previously.
Yeah.
I I I have also have to say that, um, a lot of the time that was spent, I think, in the, um, working group that I was in was a lot of it was bringing me up to speed. I think I was going backwards and forwards and I didn't quite catch on to a lot of it. So I think there was a lot of time wasted in having two bills bring me up to speed, so.
Not wasted, that's not true.
Well, I'm not saying, and I saw, well, not, it wasn't wasted for me, cause it was a very good learning.
No, it wasn't wasted.
But I think we, I think if I was more up to speed on it, I think we could have done, do a little faster. But but you, but you guys were, uh, were very, very good mentors to me and I really do appreciate that. Very, 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 you know, it was good experience.
That's, that's good, Brad, that you say that. That's very important. Um, thinking about this potential bylaw, if it ends up in the zoning bylaws. It's in my view, and it's an initial one right now, is that the text will be significantly less than the home-based business text. It might be down to one paragraph.
Uh, well, I think that Bill is going to forward you Littleton's. Are you, Bill gonna?
Yeah, I'll forward everything I have, um, Littleton Act then, and I'll see if I have any others from all my, um, my planning geek groups. You know, I may have a few other examples I can send you. But I'll I'll send it out tomorrow and and it's, you know, right now, the truth is that I'm in the weeds and so is Julia with getting ready for town meeting with our, um, you know, we did, we did get trade shop on there, but we have trade shop, we have, um, the home-based businesses and we have like four other things. Um, I can't remember what they all are, but um, so we have some time to work, you know, for this one. Uh, but, oh, downtown Norway district, we have then something else.
I think if if we, um, yeah, I I think my my biggest concern right now is just making sure that, you know, all of you can share your opinion. At this point, none of you really can share your opinion in this, in this venue, um, until that's posted. So, that's, that's I know I'm I'm a broken record, but that's, that's my biggest concern right now.
That's why I I pushed, pushed it back to you guys to tell us when to do what.
So if you would like to have a discussion on the next meeting, um, I don't think we
If you go one way or the other, but you know.
I don't think we have too many hearings up on the next, um.
I don't think we have any, do we? Julia, I don't think we have anything for next.
Did we, did we resolve the one, um, on ESP? Is it ESP not? No, Driscoll? That, like on the corner of Driscoll and Sheridan, did that get resolved? That guy want, who wanted to build on the slab?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All-time, early Alzheimer's here.
No, you're, you're talking because there was, there were some questions around the, um, there was like a math question.
Coverage, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it, that was just a human error. He just made, um, the the latest, uh, survey had just made a a simple math error. Um, and and so we, we made him send us back a corrected one with all of the accurate numbers. So um, the, we didn't bring it back, cause the decision you guys made was what we thought, which was, you know, simple error and it was, the numbers were what we thought they were supposed to be. So that one is is shut. I'm just looking.
Okay.
So the answer on that one with that math error, I I, eh eh, Julia, correct me here, he had to take his shed off.
Correct, yes.
He had too much footprint.
Oh, he did, okay.
And so because of all that algebra and the and the and the surveyors throwing it up, one of the sheds had to go.
Oh, that's right, yeah, mm-hmm.
And so instead of reconvening, I said he had to make that decision, you know, what is the right number? And if it's the the bad way for him, he has to take a shed off. And so he knocked one of the sheds down. Or he was supposed to knock one of the sheds down. I don't know.
Yes. He has to do that before he, um, starts building. So, um, that's the the, under the building inspector slash, uh, uh, building commissioner slash zoning enforcement officer to to enforce, um, that part of the decision. Um, which is easy, cause he has, uh, he has to go and and look at the actual building. Um, but in looking at our our application log that we have, uh, we have nothing. And today was the deadline for next month, so we haven't received anything. Um, so I'd say, uh, next month would be a a good time to start, um, particularly because you, you guys will start getting more variances probably come, um, April and May, um, with people wanting to do work on their house in the summer.
Sure. So let's, let's put this on the agenda for next month. As a formal item, no public hearings, but uh, on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah, I, Leslie, also, even though we're gonna do that, I would still, um, it it would be a good idea if you and Paul just touch base. Well, I'm actually, I'm gonna, I have Chris at the planning board tomorrow and I don't let him know, but I keep him in the loop too. It would be good, maybe speed things along if you want to. You know, this is cause I think the planning board, if we're gonna discuss that next month, will probably, a couple of them would probably be interested in coming in, so.
Are you suggesting that Paul and I have a, a private conversation?
No, I think that Paul, eh, uh, it might be a good idea, eh, an appropriate if Paul reaches out to Chris.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and I think that you've already reached out to Chris, so if any, if there are any changes, you know, just let me and Chris know.
So I I can just send him an email and say, yo, Leslie's gonna talk to you.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to do anything, Paul. I mean, if you don't want to, I just thought, you know, I'm just saying, it works, the more, the communication is the key for this stuff. And and open meeting, we all understand open meetings, you know, and, um, but, uh, I think that having a conversation next month on a, uh, uh, our agenda, actually, I may not be back, so it may just be Julia, but either way, um, I don't know, am I back, Julia? I don't know. You have the calendar there, but.
Um, so that would be, it's it's March twenty seventh.
Oh, darn it, I'm back. All right. Good, I'm back. Good, I'm back with this group. Bad, I don't wanna leave California.
So the other thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, the other thing we could do, um, is, uh, discuss to see if you wanna have that, since we have nothing else on the agenda, we could make it a joint public meeting. And so, um, you know, if more than three members of the planning board would like to attend, um, to discuss that with you, um, we can, we can, uh, ensure that those.
Yeah, good point, good point.
Is, um, my question was, is this something of the discussions that you have, um, uh, if there's emails going back and forth, can you keep us all on the email loop?
I will, I, um, I will keep you of anything. And you know, I send my little reminders. If it's something that is potential of meeting, it always says it. So you you just contact me individually. But yeah, absolutely, I will go.
But just going back and forth about what ideas are there and people are saying.
I I think, yeah, I think that's the the kind of what the hope of the discussion is, is so that way, you know, everything can be formally presented. Um, and and go back through and make sure that all of that is posted and and available for for the public to view as well.
I would be concerned about a lot of emails back and forth with discussion on them. Because imagine the situation that we upset one of the potential shopkeepers. And he finds out going through, uh, discovery that we've been talking outside of the public meeting forum.
Three or more I view on an email is considered.
Oh, three or more, okay.
The safe way to do is just send it to me.
Okay.
Or to Julia. Actually, this may be, I made, this may be Julia's, uh, baby here.
Oh, thanks.
Lucky you.
Just a, just a super easy one. No, no issues around it.
This is what happens when you get certified and, you know, licensed to do this kind of stuff.
Boy, I didn't think of that.
But yeah, so so we can, we can ensure that that gets posted on the agenda, um, and yeah, we'll, we'll have, this is our only topic of discussion. Unless you would like to start the zoning discussion then, or would you like to wait, um, and kind of just do this one at this meeting and then the next meeting, we can kind of start the the zoning map stuff. Um, cause that will also be, I will also be presenting that to planning board, um, in increments as well, so.
Whatever you wanna do, you you can put that on there if you want.
Okay.
Will there be any public discussion at that meeting or it's just us?
It's up to you. Eh, uh, at that, it's like, uh, uh, this isn't even a public hearing where you're obligated to take public input. You're obligated to do it in front of the public. So it'll be Paul. Um, I personally, I think that that's a good way to get sidetracked if we have too much moment before we even know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I agree. We would put on meeting power.
Yeah.
But if the meeting is, if the meeting is posted.
Right.
And it's an agenda item that's on the meeting.
Yeah.
And even if there's no public hearing portion of it, cause we don't have any cases to deal with.
Right.
We can have it and we're legit because we have posted the agenda and we're only talking the agenda items.
Right. But if you didn't wanna take public comment at this point, like, like, it would be distracting, I would think, for the board until they have a a general understanding what's going on. You don't wanna have, um, a million people just, you know, I mean, maybe you do, I don't know.
No, not yet.
You know what you're talking about, you know, with with the, in general consensus. I just say the board is gonna discuss the potential. I would advertise it on the agenda. I would say something to the effect of pu- of, uh, ZBA discussion. The the board is, uh, considering amendments to the zoning bylaw, considering location of firearms um, in the zoning bylaws and, um.
Well, it's not the location of firearms, it's location of.
Yeah, whatever, you know.
So we'll, we'll come up with with that title and send it to you, Paul, to ensure that you're comfortable with with how that's being advertised.
Then when it, then if, when there's a consensus of a general consensus, I do like we did. Why treat firearms any different than we're doing with any of the other stuff? I would say we treat it like a a home-based business. All right, once we've have an idea, then we say we're gonna have a public meeting. And okay, now we wanna have public input. You know, this is a public input. Now we get the public input here. It it it's, um, I would think that there's a, a, a progression. And we keep it orderly and see what people wanna do.
Yeah, the way I would recommend running that meeting is basically all of you would would be off mute and then, um, anyone else who's joining in um, would not have the privilege of unmuting, um, so they can observe the meeting. Um, and then, you know, but they, they would not be able to to interrupt discussion, um, you know. It's it's just an observation of of a discussion between all of you. Um, and then having at the end of that discussion, basically, an idea of what the next step is. So either you'll have another discussion or you'll decide that you wanna have a public hearing and and invite comment.
Good. And the way I hear it leaving at this point is that Julia is gonna coordinate all of that stuff.
It's not too much now, so I'm I'm okay with with putting something on the agenda, but uh, yeah, no, Bill can't get out of this one. Don't worry.
So e- either either way, you know, it's good to, you know, have something to talk about other than the individual projects. To uh deal with these things. And I like the zoning issues that you're bringing up, Julia. I think that's a good topic for for next month. We can do some screen share and you can show us what you've got. You know, I'm getting a live screen share better than in person. I tried an in-person meeting the other day and I had to ask somebody to get a a digital projector so I could show my computer. And now in remote, you could just share your computer.
And uh, so the other thing just to bring up, um, hopefully the uh state will be renewing our uh ability to have remote meetings. Um, right now, they have not renewed um the acts of twenty twenty-two to allow for public meeting remotely. Um, and they they expires bill expires March, I want to say thirteenth, but did I make that up? Thirty first. So um, so at this point, um, it most of the time, like last year, they waited until literally like three hours before it expired. Um, so uh unless another decision gets made, our March meeting will will be remote. Um, and then, you know, cross your fingers that we can, we can stay remote, uh, because I know a lot of you uh like this, this way of doing things and um as staff, we also like like this way. And we think that, you know, it helps a lot more public. So um, so just a warning for, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Um, and obviously, in the meantime, send out any emails once we get updates from the state if that changes.
Good. So this has been a, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick, just two quick questions. Uh, oh, at least one anyway. Uh, Julia, what you just talked about, and I already found this because I chair the school building committee. And uh, I was informed too that this is, we're gonna stop having remote, we're gonna be direct starting in April, you know, that's fine. I'm in Florida, I'm not home till mid-May. Uh, but they felt that that was probably okay because there are people who are on committees and boards who travel with work. They're in California, but they want to join a meeting while they're in wherever. Uh, I'm here. That doesn't mean that so I I don't know how the state's gonna write it if they do, you know.
The hybrid thing, huh?
Yeah, so I I would assume, you know, just because you don't feel like going to the meeting, well, that's not quite a good excuse, but if you're physically out of state, you could join the meeting. I don't know if it's gonna go away. I hope it does. The other thing I was gonna say too was on the school building committee, it's the nineteen, it's a little larger, it's a nineteen-member committee. Um, we had a subgroup uh on sustainability and they had, I'm gonna, I attended. I think they had four, maybe five meetings. They made no decisions. They brought recommendations back to the full board. They had discussions, lots of back and forth, came to their own little conclusions, which had no bearing on anything. That conclusion was then brought to the full board. It was discussed and it was voted on. So I think that although it's a little tougher in in between us and the planning board because, excuse me, because the boards are so small. So for us not to have a quorum, well, we have two people instead of just having Brad, right? I guess we could have two people, planning board have two. At least that'd give you four people having a discussion. And maybe Bill or Julia or somebody else from the, you know, the town uh be a part of it. But I think we can do it. We posted those meetings, but the public wasn't allowed to speak. To your point.
You had nineteen people, Jerry?
We had nineteen, it's a nineteen-member committee, yeah.
Yeah, on the school.
Pardon?
Yeah, on the school committee, yeah. So yeah, you can do it. There's multiple different options. There's working groups, there's subcommittees. Um, and and they can have all different kind of aspects. So yeah, there's, there's definitely, we have like the school committee, we have a few other um in conservation, we have one, a few other examples that we can definitely use to try to to uh in encourage that that movement of conversation and and, you know, speed up the process a little bit.
Yeah, and and even if you get a quorum, so what? Doesn't matter. Publisher invited to speak. That's all. Invited to attend, they can listen all they want, but cannot their mic is muted. That's it. So you can get your work done. Otherwise, to Bill's point, you never get the work done. And anybody, anybody who wants this one more quick thing, anybody who needs any plastic bags, we have lots of them here in Florida. I'm collecting them. I'm actually shipping, shipping some back home because I'm so tired of getting paper bags as as when I'm home that you can't carry anything and you go to Home Depot, buy a whole bunch of heavy things and they put them in a paper bag. Come on. So we got plastic bags down here. And we have gun shows too.
And I say, I know, I remember those. They're exempt.
All right. Wait a minute, Jerry, have you ever tried putting a a tube of packing in a plastic bag before from Home Depot? It won't make it out to your car.
Well, no, no, I double bag. Oh, no, I double.
Go through both of them.
Yeah, yep. So anyway, so I'll I'll shut up now. Paul, it's your meeting. Go for it.
All right, so two things. First, I'm thinking that on this discussion point, I'd like to make Julia the point person to coordinate everything for us. Is that agreeable?
Sure.
She's smiling, but she's not nodding.
Oh, sorry, are you asking? I thought you were asking your board whether or not they were okay with that.
We all agree.
Yeah, we're, we're in an agreement. We just made it a virtual motion.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you're in charge of coordinating this discussion group in the future, however it goes. And and do it the 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 best way that you think it can be done. And then the other, the other motion that I would like is a is a goodbye motion for this evening. So who wants? Oh, Jerry got his hand up first. Who's gonna second?
I I usually only second, but I I agree. I I I go for the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Leslie, you're seconding and all in favor.
Perfect.
This has been a very.
That was interesting.
We should make Mary a honorary member here. She stayed through the whole thing.
Yeah, right.
It was interesting. Maybe Mary's a future member, you never know.
Bill, Bill, we do have. Committees and we always need help and you can contact my office.
Bill, we do have an opening on the the zoning board, don't we?
We, I have a few openings everywhere.
No, no, on the zoning board, since we have a witness of how we work.
Indeed, indeed, we do. We do. We have an alternate.
So if Mary's interested, let me, you know, give Bill a call.
Yeah, email.
On it.
All right, bye, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, folks.